This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Camp, full order. Planning zoning competing for September 21st.
Member Henigan?
Present.
Member Hudson?
Here.
Member Marsh?
Here.
Member Kaczynski? Member Kaczynski? Member Kaczynski?
Jay, TV's with the phone.
Are you present?
Yes.
I'll send that member, somebody who's stepping in from his five years.
Our pledge allegiance, flag, and its faith in-
Moral and truth of our country means reason after God, indivisible, liberty is for all.
Okay, we'll start and I don't know if we have any. So I don't know.
We all seem to notice certain things that affect our sensibilities that going on. And I live on a canal, so I'm very used to barges doing their job. But one of the things I've learned along the way is these barges out, they don't really have moorings for their, they end up parking it till the next job comes in. At the end of my canal, there was an extension job recently. Barge was necessary, the seawall failed, they had to contain it. Barge was there for a long, long time. Left, it was B and M monster barge. Then it came back and stacked and stacked and stacked. I contacted Durani and I said, "You know, Durani, what's going on there?" That day, all the violence were driven across the canal from me, there's a smaller barge. Second time a barge from this place was parked there. Initially, they prepared to lift, had two or three days left to work. Barge, three weeks after that. Closer to three weeks, that barge left. Over two weeks ago, another one came in, no worksman, just parked it. These are commercial vehicles, they're parking, visual right away. I certainly don't mind them doing their job right, but do mind very much. They are sitting on our canals expecting voter voting opportunities. I think maybe we should address that one. So I'd like to see if any kind of consensus here amongst us. And perhaps we can throw that into the lap of our legal.
Um, Steve, where are you? There we are. Um, what jurisdiction do you have over the town?
So to my knowledge, the town doesn't have any restrictions on mooring of commercial vessels in navigable waters that are not related to the water. Uh, so I would have to ask the attorney to weigh in because if there is an active building permit or if they're moored legally under federal laws, uh, we may not have jurisdiction. Commercial vessels, uh, and barges, commercial work vessels, they're regulated generally by federal laws and state laws that-
But if they're just sliding into the canal, dropping their beams, sit there for a week. That would seem not counted to what they're supposed to-
I would have to talk with the attorney and determine, number one, if we have the ability to make them move because there are certain things in federal law that say that don't. As a state, local government, um, in certain circumstances, how we would work that into our ordinances. Because from what I'm hearing from you, places, with the exception of the end of the canal, which I don't know where the barge was, so I'd have to know that. If they're interior ones you're talking about, apparently do still have active permits working.
Um, this is Britt Flanagan weighing in. Is that property owned by anyone that where the barge is parking?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So is it the responsibility of the town or the owner?
That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to move these-
So my, my, my first thought is yes. It is, it is, it is probably both at this point in time, uh, to be looked at. Um, you're talking about a section of navigable waters that the attorney would have to look at the ownership rights and block them. The construction guy may come in to play with as far as how long they could be there on the job site. Are they, is the construction site managed to? I think there's a lot of questions brought forward and I have to discuss it as staff. If your definitive answer is yes, we can, or no, we can't because my experience tells me, um, that there are a lot more rules in play than just town code.
Well, all right, I'd like to refresh that.
I'll have to ask the town manager to press that for you.
Well, is there consensus from the board to be, or is, um-
Consensus. I encourage you to-
I think, I think you should, uh, that she, uh, the waterway, um, like private or, um, prevention. But I think that some, I guess, uh, I mean, those are slowing up. They just sound reasonable to park duck if it's private stuff. I think it's worth just finding out some-
And I also think-
Um, yeah. Yeah.
Could, could I ask one question? It's Britt Flanagan before our vote. Should we, and will, should we determine if this is a civil matter or, and something that's a responsibility of ownership or, and/or town code as well? Because it'll be expensive to invest a lot of money in this and we want to make sure that, um, maybe check out, um, the, um, the viability of, of the ownership, whether they are present and even aware of the barge being there and, and whether it is their responsibility versus ours to have a legal search.
Great. Okay.
Mr. Hudson, for the, for the property that you were talking about, that barge is currently on the-
Oh, we, uh, one property, uh, right now that the member escapes from Harbor Drive South. One of the many one barges. It's not one of the big monster barge camps. That's the, that's the one I'm speaking at this point. It is not only bored with its mooring beam, vertical, it's also tied off on the seawall. But at that point, not really a thing more than somebody's boat kind of, but it's got advertising. Nothing. They're essential, we need them. When they're not doing anything, we don't need them.
When a permit comes, Captain, pretty cool list. Like parking.
I think it would warrant investment. Okay, well, I think we have a unit. Hope to. Not good. Anybody else got any comment?
I did.
Yes, name?
Um, I live on Island Drive and, uh, we've had ongoing continuing problem with construction. Either what's there doesn't meet our code or the absence of what should be there because of our code. Uh, could I get an update from you, Durani, on what, what's going on? What's pending, uh, what's being ignored, uh, both on Island Drive? And could you sort of give us an assessment of how much more of this is going on in town water?
Yes, good morning. Uh, yes, Neil, uh, so the two properties we're talking about is Ninety Island Drive South, One Thirty Island Drive South. Uh, both have actually been red tagged. Island Drive South Ninety has actually started putting up a fence, although not in the right location. So, um, I'm working with them, I'm going to do a site visit today to explain to them exactly where it is. How it is. Uh, One Thirty is actually going to go to magistrate this month because that's, I think, sovereign gentleman over there. I've called him, I've talked to him, I've asked him, and it's magistrate. That takes, doesn't believe that he will. And the choices are clear that, that he needs to abide by. He wants a construction fence or he needs to take it structured over 100% and sod the property. Going to magistrate. Uh, with regards to other sites, um, when I notice that I do at first talk with the contractor or site manager who I'm able to get a connection with and, um, they don't respond, then, then we do citations and it goes to magistrate. Those two unfortunately worse and they're actually being-
Uh, at Ninety, are, are you satisfied with that fence? It doesn't, uh, do anything down the sides, sides of the lot?
Correct. So those are the things that I'll be discussing today when I get there. One, you have complete fence. Who's the location is incorrect, it's actually there right now. And there's a reason for that because the contractor went ahead and, um, put papers. So there are pallets of papers that are in the city street that they need to relocate in order to fence that. Those will be done.
Okay. Um, I, I would like to ask board to highlight the whole issue of construction fences, both for demolition projects, building projects, and if we make it one of the topics of interest to bring to the point, even with mission to schedule the half.
That's a fair request. Comment?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just, um, wanted to bring you up to the data. I've met with Durani guy on the previous project. In fact, are the requests with personal comments. He then wanted to disclose that, right, and that's part of the process trying to set up where and interpret what's done or had a question. I would hear myself. Favorite. Um, any public comments? Um, I'm not, well, from proof of that August 17th.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I read a statement here. Pursuant to the executive order number 20-69 issued by the office of governor Ron DeSantis, March 20th, 2020, the council is making meetings of their governing board without having a forum of its present visitors or at any specific occasion, large information, technologies such as telephonic video conferences as provided by section 120.5 or 5B, um, of the Florida statute. Teach us for public comments obtained by the town clerk shortly. Members of participating virtual, virtually, are Rick Carey, alternate member Britt Flanagan, and member Pen. That said, um, I'll ask for any, um, expertise.
I apologize. I just didn't-
Okay.
I did clarify this for the record. Um, Brian Shapiro was not able to attend virtually. He agenda the materials for each item on the agenda and has noted regarding the virtual meeting available beginning September 11th, 2020 on the town website. It's also available in the town clerk's office during the hour. Public will given the opportunity to commit public comments to the town clerk prior to the meeting. The town has developed several new methods ensuring public comments for a virtual meeting. Speaker may be heard by the planning and zoning commission through a teleconference and upon registering with the town clerk's instruments to publish, noting to speak for not more than three minutes on any item, hobby, and death. And this is a virtual meeting authorized by the governor of the state of Florida. Members of the public wishing to address the body may do so by. The town clerk will unmute the public once the chair calls for the public comments. Persons interested in speaking may speak up towards their public comments. Do not unmute your physical phone until you are ready to make a comment. Read your, your phone once you have completed your public comments. Persons who cannot access the meeting by teleconference things using a computer with speaking capabilities or through a smart application, call town hall at 561-732-2635 and notify town hall staff of their public comments. The town hall staff will notify the town clerk who shall read the public comments into record. These public comments options established for the virtual planning and zoning commission meeting comply with section 326.0114 and section 128.54 Florida statute. The public that is physically present for the planning and zoning commission meeting may participate in public comment by coming up to the podium. Towner motion reaches the facial covering department also encourages the public to practice social distance. All chairs within town hall have been measured to comply with the 60 social distance requirements. No essential stand stations have been placed next to podium as well as the entrance doors of town hall. Tips for virtual meeting, try to use one device. Do not attend the meeting by using both a computer and a telephone at the same time. As you will experience feedback with a strong echo and will not be able to hear the participants of the meeting properly. Use your phone. Do not unmute yourself. If you participate in by going to meeting on the occasion or computer system, do not unmute yourself. The town clerk will unmute persons at the public comments call by the chair. The information in the chat box is a public record. Call town hall if you're experiencing that physical distress.
Okay. Expertise, our time, uh, question. Okay. Okay. Go on to the agenda, action item. Okay, uh, so start with, develop plan review for 28, 28 Hudson Avenue. The re-submitting. Oh, yeah.
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your red hands. Clear our front, for the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in. And please speak respectfully and respectfully.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Um, okay, so number two, 28 Hudson Avenue. Yeah, okay. Who's representing the applicant? Or pick?
Let me take this off here. Um, I'm Gary Brown with CGM Communities, builder 28 Hudson. Um, I have the architect here if any questions come up. But we approved the la, uh, I don't know if it was the last meeting, go in reference to the project. Um, and since with homeowners coordination decided to raise elevation 10 foot and that's based on, on new, uh, guidelines that are potentially getting approved, I guess, uh, so we did talk about it at the last meeting. Um, I think the engineer for the city was here to discuss it, but we just didn't confirm that we were going to raise it. Now that we've done it, I guess, the city's actually come back and the application will-
So the question I guess, sure. I, I just got a copy of FEMA's flood zone comparison. You haven't read it, but I-
Yeah, well, the, the new, like I said, the new potential guidelines in particular floodplain, um, gonna require the- purposes of flood insurance. That would be requirement. Kind of a comparison.
I don't have a problem with that. Just create some.
Yeah, well, we were proposing to put retaining walls around the property previously, coordinated with the neighboring property on the construction. Tight walls, elevations, work with them on those walls and modify our annual closing slightly. Um, address the elevation. We also work with the, uh, with, I think, building technology. Um, with the tight wall up through sections, uh, and-
Change, uh, heck, sure, your answer's probably no, but how's it, how's it going to affect the residents?
I don't think it's going to because we're putting in retaining walls and everything's going to be retained onsite, including our own drainage system. Um, so, in fact, the, all, on one side you have, um, I guess, Bush Mangro's behind us. On the north side, you have a construction house that's up on one side, which they're installing new animal well. And, uh, all of it. Side by side to that.
West side of your property? President?
The propose, is proposer.
All right. Um, we've sort of discussed this more in the context of we're going to start seeing more of higher elevation property. And I believe your predicted site, you're going to be something like seven and a half to eight feet higher than the road out front.
Um, I believe that's correct. We have to be exact.
Find amazing perspective difference to rest of what is on that street.
Yeah, the only, yeah, yeah.
And this is a two-story house, it's not. Uh, what, what is your peak elevation, the highest part of your two-story grid?
Um, I don't have that with me, but I have the architect here that can come up and talk about the, the elevation as far as the building section. Okay?
Yeah, I would just like to hear. Thank you.
Neil, can I just, uh, the question's rather ahead of time. Your point, which is good, the only advantage is that this is a long approach. House creates a gradual rise.
Right, but there still is another lot in front that's going to be, take this mountain even bigger in relation to the street because they're probably going to have to go. It's, so now we're going to have probably two structures that are five to six foot elevation different from what other people on the street have raised of the relatively structure.
I believe we, we fit within the guidelines of the city's height restriction requirements.
Well, the height restriction is not taken from the road, it's from where we let you have your lot. That's correct. So the fact that you're starting out seven and a half feet higher than the road and then you go 36 plus whatever. I mean, it's just, it's, you're just, I think, the first person that's coming in that, the, the character of the town is, and obviously it's going to have to change, but I don't think addressed it as a subject on this board yet.
No, I think your point, I actually, that's something I missed.
Okay.
Because Brian and I, I was going to change the whole, pre-scape.
Right. And, and I have a, are the engineers representative here? Uh, how, what happens to the hydraulic pressures when, when we raise one individual lot up that high, put a retaining wall around it, and then the lower land that already is having water issues? I, I can understand that you can say the lot will drain, but basically we're creating a swimming pool with no bottom.
I just have one other. You said part of the driver on this, their real flood insurance?
No, no, they, well, well, that's going to, that's going to be part of it too. Like FEMA itself is posing a, oh, I'm in, not just going to be everywhere.
Yes, so there's ordinance that's going before the town commission regarding floor elevation. It will require that town staff use that, a little stuff from FEMA project. So requirement we noticed from FEMA.
All right.
Where do you leave from?
I'm going to ask one question. All these retaining walls, are they ten walls?
No, no, they'll be on pilot.
The section here don't indicate any pilot.
Uh, that's just, probably not the structural. Structures are being finalized as we speak, so they'll be submitted for building. They are going to be-
What kind of college?
Um, I am a-
I just want to clarify. Um, ask question. Thank you, everyone. You having one of the areas of your intention to the south side of the property? All right. Um, what is the minimum curb height intention property? Height, who are built in? Party is retaining, basically for lower property. Their minimum curb height by a property has to-
That's why I'm just, but, uh, so the groundwater is this. So this being higher, not really affects the, roads are lower, so water that goes over that inch?
Okay. Um, I want to stick with the curb because this is something for, and will become concerned down the road. Most museums-
Most means that is have six inch curb. Higher property, lower property. Mentional. This applicant has-
Oh, you're talking with the retaining wall?
Yes.
Like a lift?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I call it a curb.
Okay.
Like this type of-
Yeah, yeah.
What is the minimum?
Um, yeah, you would wanna go six inches, but these retaining walls are higher. These are actual toes, from what I understand.
Well, I'm looking at some of the property. There's one on the south that's, that's, oh, great, top of the pole.
These aren't final, so-
Okay, I'm just, in reference to the applicant, I'm trying to-
Yeah, you would ask firstly for a retaining wall. But in these instances, usually-
Yeah, they're, they're pretty close in some of the-
But yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be like building question. We don't go into every room.
Yeah, I just didn't know that from-
Yeah, that's what is definitely-
Um, do you want to hear from architect regarding?
I, I would just like, just like to know the number of the highest point of the house that's not a general bridge line or something.
Hi, Shane Anger, architect, Delray Beach. I'll have to refer to the plans quickly, but, uh, it's the same identical house to set up the three feet group. And the requirements before, we were under the check here.
Uh, while this checking, Carla, do you mind, um, going to the second page? I think that those, uh, sections for those- The retaining wall section, top view.
Yep, there we go. The number would be twenty-nine feet, one inch. To the peak of the roof, to the peak of the roof from this left, to the FEMA start point. I know we have other ones coming before you as well that are required to be a plus twelve. And they are point lots, um, here. And it's gonna end up with us stilt houses, like west, I got all the key. Something is going on with that because it's, uh, it's fully seven, or eight feet higher than land is now. So, we need to do something to figure out what we're gonna be doing for, I got stuff coming up.
That's a whole, that's a whole big issue. Yeah, I think it's, um, Ronnie and I were talking about that, go to the end of property, some of you, all that. That's something we have a workshop about. Before we even talk to, um, Shane, why don't you-
Why do those applications come in?
I've already requested stuff a month and a half ago. Didn't even get my response. For instructions as to what I should be, um, because you can't build retaining walls up seven feet on point lots possible. Call the neighbors. Since of having the stilt house, then what can we put underneath the stilt house? Rogers underneath?
I, I think, I'll just share, and you know it. Um, we're, we measure-
Right.
Most towns measuring this. From a point of reference. Height established from the street level. How you, some of the margins are just trying to talk about twelve. So, I think it's gonna create a lot of stupid construction as one property. Good example where you have the whole south end of the town plus twelve. I think it's a matter of preference. Height, what have you established?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just advocating that we're proactive on this and not we, the plans will have a-
No, I know, I think we're late to the game here, but-
So then, um-
Everybody understand? All right, I think. Any other questions, architect or architect? Um, okay. Ronnie has some?
Yes, uh, Ronnie, guy in, uh, building official. As welcome Dr. Clapper. Um, he's the first test subject that we'll have in the community. That's actually, uh, probably the second, um, but that one we're talking about is five zero six, five zero zero six Old Ocean Boulevard. Um, where that's actually on a, still the entire ground floor, actually old parking. So, that's one way of addressing it. Um, Dr. Clapper's residence, uh, will actually first that we're actually going to the new elevations, uh, from FEMA. Just a little background, uh, FEMA just com- completed their, their, um, recent studies and have, uh, published maps. And the process is usually they have a six month, by year period where they actually allow, uh, communities to make objections to the maps that they had proposed. However, because of COVID nineteen, the process has been delayed and extended somewhat. There was always a big, uh, debate about whether Palm Beach County, which of course is the largest person that we have, going to go ahead and object to the map. Uh, the word that we're getting is that they're probably are not going to object to it and that with an elevation will actually be accepted. And the numbers that we're seeing for the higher elevation are the ones that will be, uh, in this county, uh, and the rest of the country, uh, moving forward. So, what FEMA recommends is that we always use the best numbers that we have, the best available data. Is this not, that Dr. Clapper is choosing to. And for us, his lot is used because it has an extended driveway and, um, it will actually be gentle. Um, it is a shock from the height and it is a shock to the community for the height that we're going. Because he's probably ten feet above the floor level of some of the homes that we actually already have. But the truth is, this is a new reality. Uh, retaining walls are going to be a new reality to deal with the new heights that we have, all right? And, um, I actually had it, uh, talk with the architects, um, engineers while they were working on it to actually show sections, which is what we have there right now. Because, um, that is how we'll have to be. We have to follow the mandated guidelines for those heights. And they, they'll have to have the proper drainage. So, the only way is actually to elevate closure. This section again is unique and it is to be gentle because there is a property in front of Dr. Clapper that's already at six. So, he's gonna be just above that. I mean, he could have had one of the bungalows which was way low and that would have been that. The site to his right is also a new site that they're actually still at also. But the change in elevation will also be. So, you know, it is a unique situation. I apologize, he probably was frustrated during the process. But, um, it's not just your host or, but it's the entire community. As the board had mentioned, that we'll have to be discussing this. Uh, because we are gonna have lots that are closer to the street with their driveway and it's gonna mean then that, so it's gonna be, um, worse.
Ronnie, I did, I'm not sure I heard you correctly. Repeat what you said about the adjacent wall?
Oh, his adjacent lots are newer and they'll be going to the newer, not, not the ten feet right now.
What is it proposed?
His, his new height is ten, which is actually nine. So, the Florida Building Code requires that he be one foot above the FEMA minimum. So, in his case, the new proposed minimum, and we have the sheet, which is a great, uh, document that was produced by engineering a year ago, actually. Uh, so for Hudson, right now it's six, but the new proposed is nine. So, for the Florida, to, to, to meet the requirements of the Florida Building Code, it's minimum floor height would have to be ten. So, the, the, the adjacent properties are at seven. So, the difference in floor elevation between FEMA and its current neighbors will be-
And did you say they were going to fill a lot next door?
The, the adjacent lot to him is that they're currently putting in retaining walls and they will also, um, they'll not be at ten because, uh, that, was that one, um, approved previously? Your neighbor, your-
Their grandfather.
Their grandfather then, so their number will actually be at actually seven.
What are they proposed then?
Their height, seven.
So, the neighbor due east of-
Yes, I, I do believe seven.
All right, well, I think. Thank you, I, I was not speaking your project. I was breaking up the subject that I learned. I completely understand. You were the- Yeah, I, I, in your position, I would have even more questions, so I wanted to say-
So, what am I missing?
I guess, just also feel, feel my opinion. It, it turns out to be a, a lot more expensive with project now. So, uh, you know, it's not something that, uh-
Not an easy site now.
Yeah, so, uh, I get it, I thank you and, uh, um, it's kind of a new world and I think that, uh, this might be the first of many.
Hey, good luck. Um, do we, uh, not just a road or? Well, hopefully- Yeah, any comment from the public?
There's one saving grace on this is our house was only at twenty-nine feet. We had three extra feet to be able to build up in height. And we are now at that with the increase from the seven to ten.
Thank you, everybody. Like five angle drive. I, I wanted to congratulate, uh, Dr. Clapper for actually proactive about this. In the guidelines. It is a reality for us that we have to face in the very, very near future. I think it's on our agenda for second reading. So, just something that's, that's gonna come up more often. And specifically the Hudson area is one of those areas that is super low and, and very specifically that area where his lot is. Um, findable that he's doing it on his own proactively. And, um, it brings up great questions as to how we need to deal with height and, uh, facing a new reality. So, something that, uh, definitely addressed here. Um, I have one question specifically to this project. I, I might be able to, so that interior thing height of the first and second floor, what are they? We have still check. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any further questions from the commission or public? Any man? In a motion? Or just, please say it. Andrew. You had your, I'm leaving this here. Okay. Second. Hold on a second. Aye, aye. Thank you.
Send an aye. Member Cisinski sent an aye to approve these changes for twenty-eight Hudson. Member Cisinski?
Yeah, aye. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to second item on the agenda. Oh, sorry. Or would I get on for that?
Yeah, just to answer the question, first floor is the highest on prior application, only second floor was-
That was good. Okay, um, next item is ten Hudson, not ten Harbor Drive South. The applicant here? They come up quick. Were you both sworn in?
Okay, well, anybody wishing to submit this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have informed it. And please keep directly into the microphone.
I got you. Artie. So? Thank you. Very.
Morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Freddie Pallani, I'm with Randall's Stop Darkness. And, uh, someone presenting to you is ten Harbor Drive South. So, essentially what we're doing is, uh, if you're familiar with the site, there's, uh, an old house, there's some varying grades linked down to the dock. And what we're proposing is to maintain the grades as even as possible. Uh, right now there are about twelve and a half, eighteen on the site. And the existing house is approximately thirteen point nine one. So, what we're doing is we're raising the house to sixteen, uh, keeping the grade at thirteen and then creating a series of retaining walls that is a property. And drainage for site. Uh, with me here today also is the land's biggest architect. If you have any questions regarding any planting or estate design, as the state. So, e- essentially what we wanted to do was, uh, you know, create, uh, a new house, um, that is going to enhance not only the street appeal, but also take care of the varying grades, uh, which exist on the site. Um, what we're also doing is we're matching the C-wall at the rear with the new construction, uh, that's already underway. And if you take a look at our design, uh, we have a series of steps linked down to the dock, creating a nice visual effect. We're proposing like a tempered glass rail to, to minimize destruction or from the property itself. Uh, we meet all the requirements of the step backs. We also meet all the FAR and lot coverage requirements as well, all the height requirements of the stress. And you'll find that, you know, we're using, you know, like materials that you're seeing, you know, spookstaco, uh, tiled roof. And the colors are some nice, uh, clean, fresh, uh, sort of. Questions?
Questions? Artie, I guess the sixteen is based on current fourteen, natural grades.
The, the current house is at thirteen, I believe. And if you take a look at the, if you're familiar with the site, you'll notice that, you know, it curves, looks down. So, the peak is about fifteen and a half. And at either driveway, we're about fourteen to fourteen and a half, fifteen, that area. So, what we're doing is we're maintaining the driveway at approximate location and being able to get everything level as possible. Uh, existing on the house, you have approximately twelve and a half. And so, what we're doing is we're raising the house to sixteen, keep the grade at thirteen, creating twelve and doing a, about a six inch lip at the retaining wall. Retaining walls are about twelve and a half right now, so that it creates a nice low profile to be able to, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this was kind of the highest, one of the highest- Yeah, I mean, this was kind of the highest, one of the highest...
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a challenging lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's a beautiful lot, um, what is the, I see here the adjacent property west is at eight, eight feet. West to north, I don't see any... I'm missing something. No elevations up.
I have another line.
Yeah, I, I do, I mean... Um, you can only assume it's falling out pretty near end.
Yeah, it does fall out. And like I said, you know, the, the house over on the left, so they have an existing, uh, sea wall that sits, so we are matching that with our dock. And, uh, what we're doing is, like I said, all the grades and the fact, you know, of retaining on the, on the left-hand side with the new house is that they do have a high, uh, wall already. So, we are, we're not introducing anything to it, we're introducing something to it, but we're actually doing promotion, very low profile system.
Uh, do you have any questions regarding the elevation items? Walls, yeah, I mean, it's... Creating a lot of... Um... Does anybody got any comments? Please. Um, come back to the landscape thing. Talk about the front elevation or the elevation. Put up eight, three hundred. Tell me one, five and a half. That's the rare, the one before that. I think it's... Yeah, I can hear you. Um... Only turn I have is, I think the front door element's great. Question on YouTube or channel. Um...
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Actually, uh, you know, elevation through a little, uh, because, you know, we are, for example, we are looking at the garage on an air there, so a little bit of a perspective. But the intent is, you know, we do have some, uh, counters, you know, at, at the entrance and over at the kitchens. One, and also has the garage, so what I want to do is maintain the continuity of the architecture. So, because we have that little dead corner there, that's next to the house, uh, which that area is master closet, there's the master bedroom. What I want to do is create that louvered panel in order to stand the elevator. So, we actually thought it'd give it a little sign.
I think it's on this, all alcohol, you're urging it for, you know, where I'm, I'd rather have it planted.
I think...
Um, I think they, I have a question on those, uh, classroom areas. And those are the connecting wings. East. Why is that area so high? The crowding that you see on the situation, uh, in our case, left, have that, that roof just put to height in that, like, both feet or something.
For about thirteen.
Yeah, but the interior is paid for very small floor plans. You see that, that wall is just, is a proportion of the height, right, that's actually feeding with that roof that you got.
Well, so, you know, our plan is to, uh, our ceiling, you know, our, our top of beam is at eleven, so essentially, or, and, and taking into account, you know, framing, let's say, you know, framing with a parapet, it gives us approximately anywhere from twelve six to thirty, which is...
And you think the roof says seven?
Yeah, that's, that's the top of... So, my top of beam elevation is at eleven. So, I mean, we could study that parapet if you feel like...
I, I just think that you, you're really creating this extraordinary wall for a very small thing. I think the plan is great, I just think, and the same goes for my area I mentioned before, connecting to the basket. Like, you have these nice roof lines, and then you're kind of jamming for a lack of a curve, this ball up under the... The other troublesome thing for me, and, um, I would think for the owner, to be a troublesome issue is that area over the front door on the second floor, where you've got all these things out, in your floor plan, it really doesn't make any sense. You have a stairwell window, kind of off-centered to the stairwell, kind of tucked in the corner. It'd be easier just to do two. And one little slit window in the middle of it, kind of off-centered in the bedroom, none of the fenestration room, okay?
So, wait, I've lost you. Looking at, I'm mentioning it.
Okay, look at bedroom number two, stairwell. To achieve what you've created on the outside. Put a window on the stairwell. Still comfortable there?
Fourth line, uh, you know, we're looking...
Same with the bedroom, I mean, why can't you do just two, balance, same thing? The whole one, I'd be going crazy. I mean, it's, it's a good plan, a good plan, and I think it's, this is one of the few that have come in that have some, some continuity instead of poking windows randomly around. I don't know if they should recognize that. Maybe you, staying on the bedroom stairwell.
Yeah, I, so you're, you're suggesting a splitment on that?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm saying, windows, corners, stairwell, that means... So, I think if the architect is willing...
Yeah, that's not a problem, I see what you're saying, uh, it's, uh, definitely is a...
And again, you could, I think if you could, the linkages, I think are nice. That group area is just, uh, I wish, front edge is very strong, I like it. Height of those.
Well, we'll study that further and bring...
And this is, this is just a suggestion, you can get with time, I, I think, hopefully appreciate whatever.
I do, thank you very much, I...
What do you have, any other comments? Benny?
There's no questions.
Oh, sorry.
This is just, uh, a note and it's, it's free, it's, back in twenty, and there's this four gauge, five inch requirement. See, I'm just, I'm, it's very confidential, four gauge, five inch.
Uh, I haven't had the discussion of anybody, uh, about what's...
Is that general?
General.
Okay, just, part of this is...
Okay.
Thank you.
Benny? Benny, any comments from...
No, I have no comments at this time, Mark. I have no comments.
I have, I have a general comment, uh, again, it's more, uh, town issue, uh, that's integrating, uh, demolition plan, everything around it to the building plan. I don't think enough is being presented, uh, to this board as to, um, what's happening with demolition. Most of the time, we assume you're going to demolish one thirteen on my street as a prime example of something that got, went halfway, and now we have Bay Route eleven on, on our street. I would like to see, and at the next meeting that we do with the commission, the workshop, that we do more coordinating of the, what's happening with demolition, uh, pairing a bond that demolition will occur or restoration will occur, and, uh, a timeline of the demolition, and more of a timeline of when the building start and when the building will stop. I, that's, you're working within the guidelines we have now, but I'm not happy with those guidelines. I would like to, maybe to add another item that we do at the joint meeting.
Sure. Um, look at the landscaping. Sorry, man.
Oh, I...
Um, is this?
Yes. Morning.
Benny?
Morning, Smith.
Benny? Oh, not with it. What have you got, Spencer? I hear you, I said.
Um, contract is a little more on the, I've seen modern, uh, layering, layer hedge, very, uh, not overly done, um, shades of green, had a lot of different color, um, clients wanted, that was going to not look good all year long. So, um, I, um, choice, palette choice, to make sure that, um, there wasn't material that grew excessively in the summertime and couldn't be maintained enough to stay looking nice. Those plant materials that kind of hasn't eaten, growth rate eaten during the height of the, the hot summer when things go again bust everywhere, you know, it could off, and if you're on a maintenance program, it's twice a month. In between, it starts to look unruly, the guys have to come and mow and blow, and so the, the plant palette chosen was, um, uh, each plant height was chosen for, um, how it coexists with the rest of the plants around it, and ease of maintenance. Not ease of maintenance, but, um, no heightened maintenance period, like in the summertime when everything's so crazy. So, it's a very cool, simple palette, um, a lot of native trees, uh, and, uh, privacy, privacy trees on both sides of the property for the neighbors. Um, that's berry, which is kind of a standard lollipop with a beautiful green, uh, the leaves are kind of multicolored, uh, shades of green with a little bit of, uh, maroon in the underside, they're just very architectural, and they will create a tree hedge. Just like, then, like lollipops, like trunk, and then a tree hedge, and behind that, you have coat of park that stands at the backdrop against the wall on the west side, and on the east still to have it, but there's no wall on that side, I don't believe. Um, so it's a little more of a contemporary, just layered, mixed look without the crazy mix that, you know, because of the plant palette that, um, that entail. There's most, always too much. There was a mix of, uh, slender trunk palm, um, and shade trees on the road, the edge of the road, right beside the property, um, pretty, pretty clean, simple, but the architectural, not to...
Um... My other comments, other comments, any comments? Uh, very shade tree. You may...
Well, there's the threes, there's two on this side of the driveway, and a five.
Yeah, but pigeon plums are... Off here, canopy.
They're, they are... They're very manicurable, canopy, uh, but they are, they do get, they can get fifty five. They're not usually allowed to in, you know, in urban environments, but this is a great tree. And then the reason why I love to use, because it's not as messy as an oak, and oaks are my favorite. But when it comes to, um, leaf drop, the amount of, uh, cleanup that that's required with the oak tree, this is a, a fantastic tree that really doesn't have a lot of litter, so I try to choose them carefully, and I thought that was a good choice for this.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
And it's a native.
It's wonderful site, and the, and the house, the scale and the layout is fine, it's just like a prime for a little, especially on the north side. Have a, create a nice... Benny, have you got any concerns?
Sorry, Mark, every time I hit this thing, it re, it remutes myself. Um, I don't, I agree with you in one, thinking a little bit more of canopy in those trees would be nice. I'm not familiar with this tree, though. But I think that, I think it overall looks nice.
Yeah, I think it's, has the opportunity to really anchor that house. I appreciate it. Very, very, something nice for, very prominent site.
I know it is, and I, I, I...
I mean, if you could get a, something.
Um...
Again, this is just a question.
Yeah, I, I also thought about, um, stumble limbo, but it's so close to the ocean, and coming in, they're little on the bridle side.
The riders.
I know, they do. They're beautiful, they're, they're gorgeous, they have a, a bear seeds, um...
Those are you, drive north, they want to, forget to dispose for condos, lollipop tree, so grows. Really. They...
There's more for.
Some of it is magic, right? I mean, I. Sorry, I, I'm.
I know. The owners, the owners want very clean, very simple, very tailored look. Especially.
If, if highest place is elevated. Going to be subject to a lot of open problems. And if something really got spiked, it's probably going to break whether it's a.
Well, you know, like when it's five mile an hour.
Well, I don't think.
Or, or even a hundred and twenty, any, you know, all bets are off, but, um, the movement of debris and leaves, branches breaking is different, one different. Real. Um, those, in my opinion, just happen to do well. I live on the intercoastal. I have a neighbor that has one across my house and it's, it's never not looked good. Been through many partings.
Hardy tree.
It's a hardy tree. It's not a messy tree. His yard never looks littered. I mean, it has a lot of, um, you know, good qualities to it. But, I mean, if I can visit anything that these gentlemen would like with the source, everyone would like me.
Your room.
Horrible. I've never even heard of one of these. I have my, my, I, I have my.
The first.
Logan Gemma Park. I've never heard of it. Had to research it and what it was. It hasn't, it's been eradicated twenty years ago, they stopped.
It's a little, I mean, just, that's a rock shelf, isn't it? Got to be a bitch. Or a. Thank you, Mary. Problem.
Yeah.
Bye, Mary. Cheers. Here's a file.
I, I mean, you've got to do amp digging to get a good dirt bed in. You know, a lot of, it's going to have to be fertilized appropriately. That's one, pretty non-scheduled.
Other questions?
Yes, uh, just a comment, and, uh, this is generally to the board and this applicant is that, uh, I pointed out the last application that we had on this. And this, that, with the change in elevation, which then courses the, the town, like to see studies at the edges of the property. Um, your retaining walls, the heights of your retaining, that's the maximum that can. Sure. So you have to study that, look at what your grade is, um, coming up and, you know, have the scale and. That we are talking about. For the edges of the property, important, and study that. And, yeah, and we actually, something else that, uh, Mark and I discussed that we'd like to see, and you did a nice job of it. The Google Maps, I believe, pitched the Google Maps together to do a profile of this. How, how it will actually tie in. Because, you know, be a street, like what's happening with it. I, just to add that, we'd like to section size, uh, and the size, the retaining wall and in terms of grade. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, question. Public. Duncan Martin. Great.
I know. I would. Um, I'm. Burning.
All right, um. If you want to. Question. That's the, the. Visions of what Dorian. That's a good suggestion.
I don't have a comment about the, the windows. I think it's awkward to have inside, but from an exterior standpoint, which is what I'm the customer of, I would go buy. I like what you have. I like what Mark is proposing, whatever you want to live with it.
Okay, motion?
First on that motion. Providing by section, how to deal with property.
Carla, can you restate the motion, please? I, I'm getting every third word.
Are you, are you comfortable with changing the wall height as Marsh asks?
Uh, yes, um.
Would you like that to be part of the.
Yeah, I just think the window adjustment. Can it, that wall area.
Sure, you're happy with it. I'll make that part of the motion that we accept it with, uh, the changes to the wall height and the operation and the wall restriction. All right.
I, I, I kind of feel like, feel originally about. Side of. Turn their mark, but I draw, I'll, I walk by it every morning and it looks good outside.
I'm sure, um, Freddie can create the same balance and look with what else. And. The suggestion, I, I think they've, they've agreed to.
I mean, we'll, we'll study it a bit further in order to meet architectural field. Aspects of. I guess it's very common. We'll study if there are a lot. Parapet possible.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with Mr. Marsh with the height of the parapet. Of the finish.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll provide and, and we'll do that on the permits that are drawn. We'll have a section at every. Depicting.
By what we.
You, you agree, change, agree that you will look at changing the windows, correct?
We, we will study the windows, correct? We're studying the windows in order to hear aspects, I mean. Prove the, what you guys perceived as approved on the elevation. I mean. Yeah, the parapet walls, um, we'll make sure to keep them as low as possible in order.
I just want to be clear, um, um, what's the, what's the part, now that I'm thinking about it. So, um, Ed mentioned doing something really nice, elegant on, that's my interpretation.
We're just asking, I think, generally, or that's the biggest shade tree.
Not a conditional.
Okay, and, and the reason why I have them pushed just, just inside the property line is to drain people out front there that took up that space. So it'd be nice to create like a, a Kennedy City kind of little park filling with a couple of trees. But because their drain fields.
You're standing by the.
For the left. Does that drain field sweep left, right behind where I have those trees?
I, my concern is, is on the fourth feet, bigger by the garage.
Trying to parcel it. Meaning, right?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Not obstructive, giving the neighborhood a little bit.
I can imagine.
If, if I can, just to.
We would all love that, right?
Just to clarify.
We have a motion.
But just to clarify the motion, then it, it almost sounds like that I think the architect has said that he will take the, the parapet wall line and the penetration kind of under advisement. If changes can be made, then he will make them, but do you want to go ahead and, and allow, uh, I guess those, you know, I, I think the building official understands what you're looking for. And so if there are changes proposed, that they be approved by the, or that you allow the building official to approve the changes to those two areas on the plan. Correct. The, the motion, yes, okay. Worth adding to the motion. Give a second. To, to, as, as long as, I mean, in conjunction with, that, that, uh, the building officials can approve those changes. It doesn't sound like that they're ma, that they're requiring those changes to be made, but if they can be made, then the building official has the authority to approve those changes, so it won't have to come back.
It was. Retaining walls along the property.
Yes, that has.
That's, that's.
That's the third item that's out there.
And it's. Fun, fun, maybe that would have noticed everyone. If I added, I have one tree on that side too. What if I put two trees on that side?
You're, it's done, yeah, whatever you feel. Or she. All right, so a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Um. Other, is there a question, Tracy, is there any, uh, I think we're all aware of the, of the, um, workshop on the nineteenth of December. Uh, still. Make note of any concerns you have currently or.
Do, do we need a supper in the workshop or in this, raise what elevation?
I think, I think for the workshops, I think it's better. Our enjoying presence with the committee, with the vice president, so we all scratch it out.
Okay.
Instead of having.
Right, just looking forward to getting educated on your time. Okay, um, true. Good job. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you.